All right. Good evening, everyone. We are here in the Oregon Innovation Center. This is the Oregon School District Board of Education. The board has called this meeting to order. We started at 5:15. We had a work session for the 25-26 tax levy and debt defeesment, and also had a discussion on the splash pad. So the meeting, we are in session already, so we'll move right into our consent calendar. Noting our typical consent calendar, I will call your attention, we have three field trip requests within the packet, so just noting that. With that, I would take a motion to approve the consent calendar as posted. Motion by Heather, and second by Mary. Any further discussion on the consent calendar? If not, I'd like to thank our generous donations from the community. So I'm going to read these. Oregon PTO has donated $8,400 to the Prairie View Classroom Needs and Gift Cards. The Oregon Brooklyn Lions Club has donated $1,500 to the Oregon Brooklyn Lions Scholarship. The FES PTO has donated $2,721.58 for the Teacher Choice Program. $50 per teacher to purchase something they need for the classroom. We have nine separate donations from families for the Schuster's Farm Field Trip Fee donation for those families who need scholarships. We have an $8,300 donation from the Oregon PTO. That's for Netherwood Noel Classroom and Building Needs. We have another $7,900 from the Oregon PTO for Prairie View Classroom and Building Needs. From Holy Mother of Constellation Catholic Church, $635 for school supplies for students. From Fidelity Charitable, we have $500 for Netherwood Beano Classroom. Again, from Fidelity Charitable, $500 for Netherwood Noel Bestool Classroom. We have an anonymous donation of $50,000 to support science programs at Oregon High School. Another anonymous donation of $20,000 to support orchestra programs at Oregon High School. An anonymous donation of $120 for Friends of Forest Edge. A donation from Hy-Vee of 400 hot dog buns for the Prairie View Back-to-School Bash. And Stoughton Walmart has contributed $50 for hot dogs for the Prairie View Back-to-School Bash. And last, we have Culvers. 350 scoops of custard for the Prairie View Back-to-School Bash. So some very, very generous donations this month. And as always, we are very appreciative of our community for their contributions to the school district. So with that, we can call the roll. Katie?
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Hensel?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkrats?
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. All right, next up, information items. We'll start with the superintendent's report, student highlights.
Thank you. Just a little worried how this is working. All right, so we have a student representative here tonight who'll give you a little more information also in just a few moments. Thank you, Monacy. But for now, we're going to highlight a homecoming week and the spirit days and all of our OHS students who plan and organize all of these activities. They're an integral part of our homecoming week and what they organize and coordinate at such a young age really is remarkable. So we'll start with these spirit days. They're set by Student Council. From Anything But a Backpack Day, meaning you can see somebody's got a little toy Target cart to carry around all of their things for the day, to Salad Dressing Day, which is a really interesting selection, to Toga Day for the seniors. Their creativity is pretty inspiring, and the level of participation is really inspiring. And then also, we had the Student Club Fair. And you can see that this was set up in front of the PAC. And the hallways were really buzzing during lunchtime during that week. Students hosted this club fair to showcase the many opportunities that are available for getting involved with over 50 student clubs. So this is truly something for everybody. And if you're not finding what you want, there were opportunities to write down, what are you interested in? So they could start their own, too. So we're delighted always to see our students embrace leadership roles and to encourage everybody to get involved. And then the Homecoming Pep Rally. That was quite the sight to behold. It was run by OHS Student Council. They put this on, and they do an amazing job. School spirit was really on full display. Friendly competitions, a round of volleyball game, class cheers. I don't know, friendly, maybe sometimes not so friendly. Tug-of-war, a relay race, dance routines. They really put their heart and soul into this. And then they carried that spirit into the football game later that night to cheer on the Panthers. And if you were there, you know you were among probably a couple of thousand people at that game that evening. So many thanks to OHS Student Council. The band, oh my goodness, were they amazing. Our choir, our athletes, and all of the organizers for the event. And you can see, this is another example of, this is our band. So when the pep rally got going, and they did all of this, the band was at the pep rally, and then they all got in line and marched in the parade. And what a gorgeous day this was for a parade. We love this event. We love the joy it brings to the community. It's just so wholesome. The band really stole the show. And then here you are at the game. It was a gorgeous night for a homecoming game. The stands were packed. The band once again played a shining role. The cheers were contagious. And our student athletes, they played really hard right up until the very end. Our community shows up in so many ways to support us, and they helped create an amazing atmosphere. And many thanks to the Oregon staff members, the police department, the fire department and EMS, our concession workers, the custodial staff, everybody who was there this night to make it a great memory for our students and for the community. That's it.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, so next up, public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? No one's registered. Checking for anyone who wanted to speak for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on. OEA report? No reports tonight? All right, thank you. Student report?
So we had a homecoming on October 3rd with a dance on the 4th. Our football team played in Menno Grove, and we had the annual homecoming parade. Coming up, we have parent-teacher conferences on October 14th. And the Oregon Orchestra is having a concert on the 20th of October. Our German exchange students from our sister school in Longan, Germany, came to OHS on September 21st and will be staying with their host families till October 15th.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, I've been seeing media around our German exchange students, so great to see that program continuing. All right, next up, we'll move to action items. First item up is our board policy, 174 Board Governance. And I'll turn that over to Dr. Lakuta.
Thank you. So the Policy Committee met on the 29th of September, and a question had come up before then around the, really, the scope of work for both of the standing committees, the visioning committee and the policy committee. And so we collectively decided to revisit the Board Governance Policy. And each committee developed charters that will actually be discussed next. And so the policy indicates that each charter will be approved by the board and attached to the Board Governance Policy 174. Gina, what did I miss?
You have it.
Okay. And so the Policy Committee recommends approving the revised version of Policy 174. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Lakuta? I guess, Mary, maybe just go over any significant changes in the policy itself? Was it just the addition of the charter piece?
So I recall 17402.5. Oh, do you have? Oh, excellent. Do you want to, would you like to speak to it? All right. So 17402, there was additional language around, I am not wearing my computer glasses, sorry. The following Standing Committee's Policy and Vision Steering. The Board may meet as a committee of the whole as deemed necessary by the Board President in consultation with the district administrator or as approved by the Board. So that language was added into 17402, the introductory paragraph. And then 17402.5, Standing Committees shall each have a charter approved by the Board. The charters will be attached to this policy. And that was, those were the only changes.
You're right.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mary. So we will vote on this as a full board. So I don't think I need a motion because it's coming from policy. So any further discussion on this updated policy? All right, Katie, call the roll.
Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Hensel?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkrats?
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. We have a new Policy 174 for Board Governance. All right, next up, we have the approval of the Vision Steering Committee Charter. And that is for Anna.
Thank you, Troy. Our Vision Committee met to discuss our charter. And in the charter, really, we're focusing on, what is the purpose of the visioning committee? What is the scope of work that would be kind of held within the visioning committee? And then more technical things, I guess, were related to roles, responsibilities, meetings, and term. And so I guess, from a big-picture perspective, the visioning committee really is focused on guiding long-term planning efforts, looking, monitoring and guiding long-term trends and themes, looking at data and facilitating strategic planning conversations for, related to long-term growth or the district's vision, and reflecting student and staff needs, community values, and ensuring that our educational practices are aligned. The Board, the visioning committee does not have any authority as a committee. We are advisory to the full Board, and so that's also identified here. As far as a scope of work, I'll just highlight the four bullets. We defined the scope of work to include reviewing and refining the district's mission, vision, and values, creating a shared picture of what success looks like for students, staff, and community. You can imagine our portrait of a graduate work that really came out of our visioning committee a few years ago. Recommending strategic priorities that support academic excellence, students' physical and emotional well-being, equity, innovation, and the district's financial sustainability. And then providing input into, like I mentioned, those long-term planning initiatives to ensure alignment with student and staff needs and community priorities. I felt this was a really great reflection of the work that's being done in the visioning committee. And our committee unanimously approved the language that you see before you. So on behalf of visioning, I would recommend approval of the Visioning Committee Charter as presented this evening.
Thank you, Anna. Any discussion or questions? Mary, go ahead.
Thanks, Anna. So during the conversation on the Policy Committee Charter, one of the clarifications that we decided to add to the charter was the committee's recommendations are not required for a topic to be taken to the Board. And that clarification was added to the charter just to make it very clear that any topic really can be taken to the full Board without needing to go before the Policy Committee. And I would suggest that it would be appropriate to add that as well to the Visioning Committee Charter.
Yeah, I noticed that in policy. Is that in the Section 2 scope of, you've got it identified in Section 2 Scope of Work. So it's a sentence that follows, the committee's role is advisory to the Board. The committee does not speak for the Board as a whole. And then you're suggesting adding, the committee's recommendations are not required for a topic to be taken to the Board.
Yes, that would be my friendly amendment? Friendly? No?
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend. Thank you.
All right, so that's a motion to add a sentence to the scope of work that would read, the committee's recommendations are not required for a topic to be taken to the Board. Is there a second on that motion?
As a member of the Visioning Committee, I'll make, I'll give it that a second.
Okay. So second by Nathan. So we'll vote on that amendment. Katie, can I ask you to call the roll on that?
Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Mr. Hensel?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkrats?
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. So now we have a revised visioning committee charter with an additional sentence. And we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? I would just clarify, the effective date listed here, printed here is September 22nd, 2025. I would assume we're going to change that to today's date after we approve this, October 13th. And Gina's confirming that. Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion, Katie, please call the roll. And now we're voting on the approval of the Visioning Committee Charter.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Hensel?
Yes.
Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkrats?
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. We now have a visioning committee charter. So thank you all for the work on that. Next up, we have the approval of the Policy Committee Charter. And I'll go back to you, Dr. Lakuta.
Thank you. So the Policy Committee, as the name suggests, it actually reviews policies, laws, regulations, data to ensure that the Board's policies are legally compliant as well as to reflect the district's missions and values. As with the visioning committee, the committee is accountable to the full Board and has no authority as a committee itself. Recommendations for full Board vote are needed for actions to be taken. And so the scope of work, as defined in the charter, includes reviewing, revising, and/or drafting policies for consideration by the Board, reviewing and revising the employee handbook for consideration by the Board, reviewing and revising the co-curricular code for consideration by the Board, and developing annually the school calendar for recommendation to the Board. And so I think it was very useful to kind of put thoughts to the page and define really the scope of work of this policy. The Policy Committee does recommend approval, Board approval, for this charter.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor for approval of the charter. Is there any discussion or questions for Dr. Lakuta or the Policy Committee?
Maybe just one simple question. Just curious why the calendar is a recommendation out of the Policy Committee? I'm sure that's long been that way. It's probably tied to some other policy that I'm omitting, but just a general question on that.
Yes, so we did discuss that in policy. That is one where, this is my 13th year here, and the calendar has bounced around in different places. And so, and for the past few years, it's lived in the Policy Committee. And the feeling of the committee was that it did need a place for more in-depth discussion than a Board meeting might allow. So decided to keep it indefinitely to live in Policy Committee.
Good. Well, thank you for that. That makes sense. And it's nice to see it called out specifically in the charter. So there we go. Two answers, one thing. Appreciate that very much.
Yes, it's not intuitive, that's for sure.
Well, yeah, so that's very helpful. Thank you.
I have a question. Sorry I missed both committee meetings when these charters were being discussed, but I'm wondering if there was any discussion around how frequently we would review charter, the charter as an update? Was that discussed at all?
So it is in number eight in the charter that the calendar will be annually approved by the committee. But there's no specific requirement for the charter itself to be reviewed, correct?
True.
And so I think it will be beholden on each of the two committees to make sure that the charters are evaluated to see if the committee's shift scope of work.
Yeah. Yeah, I think my recommendation would be that first meeting in May on both committee would be a time to review the charter and reconfirm that it's still valid and, you know, doesn't need any changes. So, being that I see both committees have a term from May 1 to March 31, so.
Are you suggesting that that date of the review be added to each of the two charters?
No. No, I don't think we need to add it. I just think that's a practice that we can carry out as we go forward. All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, Katie, please call the roll. We're approving, we're voting on the approval of the Policy Committee Charter.
Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Hensel?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkrats?
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. We now have a Policy Committee Charter. All right, so that brings us to our next item here. Action item D4, which is the retirement of Dr. Bergstrom, effective June 30th, 2026. So Dr. Bergstrom has submitted her intent to retire. And, boy, we are so appreciative of the time that you have given this district. I, you know, I really thought I'd have some more time with you, but I also understand life, and the time for you to do other things has come. So we will have much more time to celebrate all of your accomplishments. But tonight, with respect and appreciation, we are considering the approval of Dr. Leslie Bergstrom's retirement at the conclusion of 25-26 school year, which will be June 30th, 2026. You know, this decision marks the close of a remarkable chapter in our district's history. And it's one that was defined by unwavering dedication to children, a relentless pursuit of learning, and a deep commitment to equity in the Oregon community. Your accomplishments are far too many to name here, but I do want to state a few of them that stand out as you were superintendent for the past five years. So under Dr. Bergstrom's leadership, we created the Portrait of a Graduate, which aligns our district work with, around the characteristics and attributes that we want our students to possess by the time they graduate from Oregon High School. Your ongoing collaboration with local healthcare organizations, including mental health providers, has reinforced the district's commitment to student and staff well-being. It has been absolutely revolutionary, what has been accomplished in that area under your leadership. Several community-centered initiatives. You've launched Inside the OSD, which is just, the podcast, which is just one of the many things that has been done under your leadership to strengthen communication and deepen engagement with families and stakeholders. Under your leadership, the district's net promoter score has risen each year, placing OSD at a nationally recognized position, a reflection of growing trust and satisfaction across the community. And you've always remained a visible and supportive presence at school events, consistently showing up for students and staff beyond the classroom. Your strategic outreach around the operational referendum has helped to secure its successful passage, enabling meaningful increases in staff salaries and reinforcing the district's investment in educational excellence. You've led the Professional Sustainability Task Force, which has worked towards improving our professional environment. Internally, you've conducted many stay interviews with staff and maintained a clear focus on streamlining educator responsibilities, ensuring that effective learning experiences remain at the heart of district operations. And your contributions reflect a deep dedication to children, learning, equity, and community, and leave the district stronger, more connected, and better positioned for the future. Throughout your entire tenure, you have led with vision and heart. You've championed initiatives that advanced academic achievement for all students and ensured that every child, regardless of their background, has access to opportunity, support, and excellence. So from the bottom of my heart, Dr. Bergstrom, I thank you for your dedication to this district. And your time is not done yet. We have a good amount of time left with you, but really very much appreciate the work that you've done and have appreciated being a partner with you in leading this district. So, did you have anything to say?
First of all, that was very kind. Thank you. And secondly, everything that he mentioned was done with a team. It was a whole team of people coming together to make great things happen for kids. And that's always been a team, with our Board, with our staff, certainly with my administrative colleagues. It's always been the team that's made the difference, people coming together for a common purpose. And it's something that's always made me very proud to be here. And I'm grateful for the 22 years, but I'm also exceedingly grateful that there is one more because there's still time to do the great work with the team that's here because we have all the right people to keep doing good things for kids. And I have so much care and affection for our Board, our staff, my administrative teammates, most specifically our students. Thank you for being here tonight, Monacy. And our community, the Oregon School District community, you just couldn't find a more supportive group of people, people who love students, young people, and value public education more than this community does. And that is something that you just don't find everywhere. And I know that you will have an amazing next superintendent because all of the good things happening here will attract people who believe in all of the things we believe in in pursuit of better things for our students. So, thank you all. I've loved the ride, and the next year is going to be great.
All right. With that, we do need to make a motion and vote on the acceptance of Dr. Bergstrom's retirement letter. It's a motion by Heather. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Lakuta. Any further discussion?
If we vote no, can you not retire? Is that what that means?
All right, Katie, please call the roll.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Begrudgingly.
Mr. Hensel?
Yes, with gratitude.
Mr. Pinkrats?
Yes, all right, motion carries six zero. Thank you, Dr. Bergstrom. All right, that brings us to the next step of this process, which is action item D five. This is the approval of McPherson and Jacobson LLC. It's a contract regarding the superintendent's search. So Gina and I have been working in the background to prepare for the next steps of hiring our next Oregon School District Superintendent. So we have, we started with a list of 15 different superintendent's search firms that regularly serve school districts in Wisconsin. We did some research. We narrowed that list of 15 down to seven, and then we sent a request for a screening interview to all seven firms. Three responded to our request, and during that process, one of those firms shared that they were not, that they were also conducting a national search for another large school district in Wisconsin. And they, they indicated that they would not have capacity to do both. So we then interviewed the two remaining firms. And at this time, we recommend that the board contract with McPherson and Jacobson. McPherson and Jacobson is a, it's a national firm. They work with typically retired superintendents who lead these searches in areas across Wisconsin. Our lead consultant will be Mr. Dennis Pauli. Incidentally, I've had some exposure to Mr. Pauli at WASB conferences. I've, I've sat in on some of his, his presentations. So I've, I've had remembered him from a couple of different presentations that he's, he's shared. He had been a superintendent at Edgerton School District for 15 years. He has recently retired. What's noteworthy is that he actually lived in Oregon for a period of time, and both of his children graduated from Oregon High School. So he knows our community very, very well, is located nearby, and was also a contributing factor in, in being cost competitive compared to the other shortlisted firm. So a little bit about the process, we will be diving into that later on this evening to kick off the, the start of this process. But there's a series of phases here. Phase one will be identifying what's important to us in terms of characteristics of the next superintendent. We'll start to establish some of the important dates for the selection process and determine which stakeholder groups we'll be engaging with. Phase two will be developing the application form, making our application unique to our district, creating the vacancy announcement, et cetera. Phase three, the consultant will review those, those applicant files and make, help us to conduct reference checks and develop, start to develop a set of interview questions for the district to use, which will reflect our identified criteria. Phase four, we will review the top candidates, or the consultant will help us review the top candidates and assist the district in determining which candidates for, we want to bring in for an interview, and then help us through the interview process. Phase five is helping us with the selection. And there's some guarantees included here. That's, that's the overview. Phase, there's five different phases. So much more to come on that. As I said, we'll be learning more about that this evening after the, the regular board meeting. So it's my recommendation to approve McPherson and Jacobson to assist us with our superintendent's search. Would entertain a motion as such.
So moved.
All right, motion by Nathan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mary. Any further discussion? All right, Katie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hensel?
Yes.
Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkrats?
Yes, motion carries six zero. Thank you for that. We have a contract for superintendent's search. All right, next up, discussion items, committee reports. I'll start with visioning. Anna, anything additional to add from beyond the charter?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is our next meeting is going to be held on October 27th at 5:15 in the Innovation Conference Room. That's it.
Thank you. Mary for policy?
The next policy meeting will be the 20th of October at 5:30 in the district meeting room.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item F1, information items. We have early learning and four-year-old kindergarten goals update.
Well, thank you. And I'm going to have my colleagues Lindsay Engelhardt and Dr. Wyden C. come up, because they will be a part of this conversation. Actually, they will be the feature of this conversation. I am only going to give us a little bit of an intro, because the work they will display tonight in discussing our early childhood and 4K programming really sets the stage for what to expect as our other schools come up and speak about what was accomplished in 24-25 and how, what we're looking forward to in 25-26, and key strategies and measurements for those things. So of course, and everything that you hear Lindsay and Candace talk about tonight, you will hear about the fact that our mission starts from the very first time that our little ones, and I mean little, two years old, two, excuse me, three years old, step into the school district. And everything we do from that point forward is driven by our values and in service of Portrait of a Graduate, because really, as young as three is when we're setting the stage for what we are hoping and dreaming for them, related to what they're able to accomplish, and all the potential that we're able to support them as it unfolds throughout their lives. And then, of course, the presentation you will hear tonight and the subsequent ones are certainly in service of the board priorities. And as far as OSD goals, they're really going to be highlighting on Goal One and Goal Two, which is increased academic achievement and increased learning readiness. And that's both physical and emotional learning readiness. So tonight is the kickoff. You will continue at every board meeting moving forward, hearing a little bit more about last year and what we're looking forward to this year and how we're measuring our success. And now I'll hand it over to my colleagues. Katie, do they have a clicker?
So we were kind of in Caleb's camp and thinking maybe you'd vote no on Leslie's resignation. But thank you for having us. We're happy to be here tonight. This is a super exciting area to talk about, and Leslie introed it really, of course, in a stellar way, because it is an opportunity for us to start off so many lives in such a good way in the Oregon School District. So we want to start with that piece. We start out with really special education at the three-year-old level. So our counterparts at the county level are providing services from birth to three. And at three years old, they come to us 90 days in advance of their third birthday. We will get referrals from birth to three. And we are obligated to start, if they qualify for us, we're obligated to start their services on their third birthday. So it really is the first step to the district. We receive a number of referrals from birth to three. We also receive referrals from the medical professionals in the community, in the greater Dane County area, and from our parents and guardians, and from screeners. So we will show you over the course of the next few slides what that really looks like in the district for the last few years. So from April of 2023 through the present, we have received 61 birth-to-three referrals. It's a huge number of actual referrals. So of those, we've had 40 who've qualified for some area of special education. We've had a few that have not been referred. You know, they, they've mastered whatever goals they needed to achieve in birth to three, so they weren't referred to us. We had a few that didn't choose to come to us as referrals, and those can be for a variety of reasons. They have other, you know, avenues to get services, or just decide that they don't want them, whatever the case may be. But not very many parents choose that. We currently have three birth-to-three referrals in process, and we have eight that are listed. We are notified of a list of students and their birth dates from the state. And we have eight currently on the list until June of 2026. So it's an ever-flowing referral system. We, you know, that changes periodically. We will have notifications at 90 days out when that's possible, but the birth-to-three process is also changing all the time, right? They have in-and-out children who need services, and then they get referred to us. So that's what we have right now pending from birth to three. We also do a variety of screening for students. So here you can see over the last four years, the percentage of students who have been referred out of our screening. The first couple are in the lower range, from 15 and 14% of the, the students screened were referred on to, to an evaluation for special education. Last year, we screened 44 students and referred 16 of them. So as you can see, our numbers are increasing pretty steadily. And this year, we've had one screening. We did birth-to-three, I mean, we did a three-year-old screening the week of RSG conferences. And so we looked at mainly our three-year-olds at that screening. We screened 24 children, and eight of them were referred. We are screening our four-year-olds on October 30th. So we anticipate having a number of referrals from that screening as well. So we're at that 33% range right now for our screening data, and we expect to see quite a few more. We wanted to think about the second screening a little bit later, after kids have started from four, in 4K and see them in the classroom. We have all of our services in those classrooms. So our, our special ed staff are able to support the 4K students who are in and already identified, but then they can also provide some suggestions and really make, hopefully make our referrals a lot stronger when they happen. So it's probably of no surprise to anyone that the largest category of impairment for our preschoolers is in speech and language. We have a lot of children who will qualify for speech and language and work on their sound development, being able to communicate more clearly and grow their vocabulary and things like that. So that's our largest category, always has been our largest category at the early childhood level. More recently, though, within the last, I would say, eight years, we've seen a huge increase in autism. And we're at, that right now is at 22% of our early childhood disability category. We have, we have recently seen an increase in other health impairment and significant developmental delay. And we have a few students that 3%. We kept it sort of as the low incidence category, because it's, you know, there's not very many students there, and they, they would be easily identified. So that's our vision impaired, our hearing impaired, our traumatic brain injury. Students that have been identified or are in the referral process for those low incidence categories. So where do you think we are seeing all of these kids? Everywhere, like literally everywhere in the community. Actually, in Play Crew, we operate Play Crew with, in partnership with community ed. So we ask them to advertise for children who are just general ed children who would like to be participants in Play Crew. And then we, as our special ed staff, refer and evaluate the students we have a place to, to provide services to. So we provide early childhood, speech, language, OT and PT in our Play Crew classrooms. It's operated like a regular preschool classroom, so they have some carpet times, some snack times, you know, some small group reading, and really very play-based learning in that setting. The Play Crew operates two days a week for an hour and a half each session. We right now are running four sections. And last year, I think we got up to six sections of Play Crew. We also provide services at all of our community 4K sites. So the, where they have preschools in those partnerships, we have children who receive services in those preschool settings, as well as in the 4K partner sites. These are our most inclusive settings for providing special ed. Like, it is really all about providing all of those services in the classroom. There is periodically a child who needs to come out for PT or something like that, but it's minimal, and most of the services are really in the classroom, and they're all learning together side by side. It's, it's phenomenal. It's wonderful to see. We also provide services in our phonology classroom. This is a speech and language program. It is our, probably our only real self-contained classroom. It runs four days a week for an hour each day, and it's really an intensive, you know, drill, kind of skill and drill on sounds. So they run in four-week cycles, four weeks on, four weeks off. They have, then children have time to practice the sounds that they've been learning in the, in the phonology classroom, in their home environments, or in their preschools. And then they come back four weeks later and have another round. And then, of course, for, for kids that doesn't work out to have services in some other way, they can always come in, and we can do individual sessions with a speech person, or an OT, or whatever the case may be. So we do have some walk-in services. It really is our lowest number in terms of how we provide services. So we are a busy place at the early childhood level and 4K sites. And we want to continue to support the structure and of Play Crew. And what we really would benefit from is more peer candidates for that program. We would love to see more of our general ed population coming to Play Crew, so that we can really make that a more inclusive environment as well, and not have it be overly, as we place students, have it be more, more students with disabilities than not. So we'd like to encourage anyone who's listening tonight to bring in their kids to Play Crew, sign them up. We'll take them. And then we, you know, we've, we've come to you a few times in the past to look at our staffing services. That's an area that we need to continue to, to study and see what is the best way to deliver services, because it is such a growing area. Last year, I think, we asked for additional early childhood staff and additional OT staff, and you obliged us, and we're very appreciative of that. We have so many sites to serve. There's six of our 4K sites, plus all the other sites, that we just need to keep monitoring that and make sure that, you know, we're, we have the staffing to provide the services that we've committed to. So that's an ongoing kind of a, a place for us. And then we, we, of course, want to continue to seek out preschool and 4K site partnerships. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my very good colleague, Lindsay Engelhardt, to talk about specifically the 4K program.
Thank you. So this year in 4K, we have six partner sites. These include Mariposa Learning Center out in Pittsburgh, Heart of Brooklyn, down in the Village of Brooklyn. And then we have four sites here in the Village, Starlight Academy, Oregon Daycare or ODI, Oregon Preschool or OPI, and Little Angels Early Learning Center. And then across these six sites, we have 13 sections of 4K this year. In addition, we host an outreach event every month for 4, our 4K families, which in the, these pictures are from our first outreach event, which was in September, our family kickoff. It is always our most attended night. And thankfully, every year, we've always had really great weather. And so we serve dinner. It's at Kaiser Shelter, so there's the Netherwood Playground. Frequently, the Oregon Public Library comes and kind of shares information about their programs. And so it's just a great way to get families starting to build those relationships and connections, both within their, their 4K site, but also throughout the entire district. So this is our 4K goal from the 24-25 school year, or sorry, for the, yeah, for this upcoming school year, is that all learners will be proficient in our key literacy skills as measured by the 4K report card. And so it's really focusing in on three early literacy strands, including the uppercase letter identification, lowercase letter identification, and sound production. And we have a learner growth profile that we do with each individual student to monitor their growth over the course of the year. I think it's also really important to remember that when kids come to 4K, we don't have any expectation that they come to us with any prior academic readiness skills. And so we meet them wherever they're at, whether they come to us knowing zero letters, or they come knowing all 26. So when we think about how we're going to meet our goal, it really comes down to a few of our key strategies. And so first, we're going to continue to implement the PLC plus model across each of our 4K sites. And so every month, I have a PLC meeting with the 4K teacher, any special education staff that is able to make it. Typically, it is our early childhood case manager, but sometimes I can get a speech or an OT to join us, especially in our classrooms where we have, are, are serving a lot of students. And so we are always analyzing our data and thinking about where we are going next, which is really helpful when it's really specific to each individual site that I'm working at. We're going to continue to really lean in on our inclusion. As Candace said, we are the most inclusive across all of our grade levels in our district right now at that early childhood and 4K level. And I think another contributing factor to that is that it's super play-based. And so it naturally lends itself to inclusion, where children can be interacting and learning together. And then the speech pathologist can just come sit down next to the kids in the block area and start working on some of those language development sounds. And so it's just a really natural way to do that in a play-based setting. We're going to continue our work on second step, our social and emotional learning curriculum. So we So we implemented that last year and that was me delivering the curriculum to every classroom every week. And so this year we have moved to our teachers doing that. And really we now have the opportunity for our teachers to do it to fidelity, which looks like 10 to 15 minutes every day. So kids are having the opportunity to have that skill reinforced all week long, every single day. And so that is another way to really lean into that social and emotional piece, which we know at the 4K level needs a lot of direct instruction because kids aren't used to, you know, coming to the rug or sharing their toys if they're coming from home. Another key strategy we're using is that structured free play. And so there's two different play types that happen in our 4K classroom. One is just that like open-ended free play, come into the classroom, play with whatever kind of sparks your interest and certainly builds brain development and is great for kids. There's also structured free play and that's something that we've really started leaning into a little bit more. And so it's really giving kids the opportunity to provide that structure during playtime. So creating opportunities for them to naturally explore and build those important skills with just a little direction from the teacher. So maybe you're in the sensory table and now you're being exposed to the letters or you're in the block area and you're focusing on shapes. And so just giving them a little more direction so that they can still be playing, but also really kind of honing in on some of those early literacy and numeracy skills. Hegarty is another really big piece of a key strategy for us with our phonemic awareness curriculum. And so we have been doing that the last few years and I would say this year in particular, we have more teachers implementing it to fidelity. So I have been in classrooms during their scheduled Hegarty time and have seen them rolling it out, which is really important because Hegarty focuses in on some of those key pre-literacy skills. So thinking about like blending of words, segmenting, isolation, rhyming, and they're, they're teaching them through structure and routine. So they're practicing the same routine every day, but the words are changing so that they're building their capacity on those phonemic awareness skills. And then lastly, we're doing a two-year rollout with Cox Campus for the science of reading. So some of our teachers have done letters training and Cox Campus. And so at the 4K level, we're doing the pre-K5 structured literacy program. And really it's to give our teachers that really solid understanding on best practices related to literacy so that we can make sure that we're carrying those practices out in our classrooms. So this is our data from the 24-25 school year. And so looking at it in comparison to the 23-24 year, one of the biggest growth areas we've made is in sound production, which increased from 78.5% proficiency up to 81, or sorry, 82% this past year. And I really attribute a lot of that to Hegarty because historically, sound production has been kind of like our lowest proficiency area in these three strands. And so in our PLCs, last year we were really targeting that sound production piece of what can we do to really get kids more repeated exposure to that while also balancing, it's difficult to know what sound a letter makes if you aren't able to identify the letter yet. And so it's really thinking about how are we taking those kids that maybe are coming to us with upwards of, you know, 18 to the 26 letters and then leaning into that sounds right away. So that, that differentiated instruction is really then starting on that sound production right away. I also think about our special education population who are not yet proficient and thinking about how and why that might be. As Candace mentioned, our speech and language disability category is the highest area that of kids that we have. And so I think this year in particular, I really want to focus in on a group, the group of students who have really, really limited communication. So as like educators, thinking about like, how can we expand our knowledge and skills so that then we can accurately assess our students who have that really limited communication? Because we have students that are coming to us in the process of getting like a talking device to help them communicate or we're seeing students who are maybe only using like one or two-word phrases. And so just thinking about how can we, you know, learn about how to assess better for those really limited communication students. And then thinking about our Hispanic and Latino students where English is not their first language, we have real, last year we really targeted that population in one specific classroom where we had a, we were lucky to have a bilingual para who was able to be in that classroom and really reinforce some of those classroom expectations. Again, for some of these kids coming in and saying, come and sit down at the rug is like, I don't really know what you're talking about. Like they don't know how to do that. And so then when you add the, another piece of English isn't my first language, of really having that bilingual para support, that classroom expectation and routine and structure so that then they can access the curriculum and they can be regulated, so they can be participating with their peers in their classroom. And so that is another area that we are continuing to utilize again this year with a, a group of students and so far have had great feedback from the classroom teacher. So then moving forward, we are really focusing on our PLCs right now on question five, thinking about who benefited and who did not, and then what are we going to do about that? And so that really, that piece of that question is really going to help us make sure that we're continually monitoring that student progress, but also making sure that we are looking at every individual kid and thinking, what intentional steps am I making for this student and this student and this student? Recognizing that whatever we're doing for every individual student is also going to benefit the whole. We are looking at universal literacy curriculum. So as I mentioned, the first step of that is really getting our stu, our staff trained in the science of reading so that they have the best practice. But then moving towards to finding a universal literacy curriculum that we can use at all of our sites. Because right now, what, they're all doing great work with bits and pieces from varieties of curriculums that we have adopted over the years. But then we can transition to a universal curriculum that then it doesn't matter what site you're at, that you're all getting, we're all getting the same universal curriculum, similar to what we have with Bridges Second Step Integrity. Another priority for moving forward is really thinking about those authentic, age-appropriate assessments. So as you can imagine, like four-year-olds don't respond super well to repetitive, like formal testing of come sit at the table with me and we're going to go through these letters. So really focusing in on how can we embed assessments naturally into that play-based environment? And while I realize that that takes individual attention, it takes teacher time in planning, there are some like really practical, natural ways to gather some of that data in the 4K classroom, which we'll kind of work through in our PLCs as we look at those students. And then lastly, just continuing to lean in on behavior strategies. So many of the behaviors that we're seeing at the 4K level are really due to a lack of exposure of being in a structured environment with expectations of 20 kids. And so thinking about our, our second step, as well as I often go in and do observations, especially, you know, it helps sometimes to just have a outside person come in so that we can really think carefully, how can we support our learners so that they are socially and emotionally ready to take on the curriculum? And not, not only that, but thinking ahead to kindergarten. Right now they're in three hours and 15 minutes, four days a week, and that jump to kindergarten is a big jump to go to seven hours, five days a week. And so making sure that we're, we're setting them up for success while remembering that they're four and what's developmentally appropriate for a four-year-old. All right. What questions do you have for Candace and I?
Thanks for the presentation. Can you go back to the pie chart slide, please? The proficiency, yep.
Keep going. This one?
No, I'm sorry, no, the, the data one there, that's the word data. Is this the 80, 85 as we scroll down, as we go down the page, is this from last school year's data?
Yes.
And then do you have, I guess I'm looking for kind of where does that, how does that change, knowing that it's a different subset of kids every year? So you're not having the same thing, but are, is proficiency increasing, decreasing? What's the trajectory from the year before or years past?
Yeah. So from the year before, we were at 81.8% proficient in uppercase and we were at 83.2 for lowercase. So I would say historically, like upper and lower changes just a little bit here and there. I do think our lowercase letters are a little bit more, or a higher proficiency rate because when you think about what kinds of letters you see in the natural environment or in text, it is more frequently lowercase letters. We do do uppercase letters for like starting kids with their name when you're actually like forming the letters, but lowercase does tend to be a little bit higher in general.
My follow-up question, thank you for that, is specifically as one of the district goals is around, you know, the black, Hispanic, Asian, American, that, that column and the, and having a 7% growth, right? Where is that column as compared to last year?
So I don't have it all combined from last year. I have it like as individ, like each individual piece, but thinking about that popul, so in 4K, it's a very small population because we're, we're not, just not as many kids. But I would say that when I think about our Hispanic and Latino population in particular, we do have a lot of those students who attend Mariposa. And so sometimes our proficiency shows a little bit lower on that because this is based on their English proficiency. And with Mariposa being an immersion program, they are really focusing on that Spanish piece. And so we know though, that over time, they will continue to become proficient and at a greater rate than their peers. And that was a study that Dr. Bergstrom and myself and John did last year.
I think it's a quick one. You mentioned interest in getting more of our staff trained in the science of reading and I guess I'm just curious where we're at with that. What, do you know what percentage are or what percentage still need to be or what that process looks like if that's one of the goals?
Yeah. So it, we rolled it out this year. So in August, we, so the, the professional development works a little different for 4K staff just because they are not like our district employees. So we follow a different professional development schedule than the rest of the district does. So in August, there was six of our eight hours devoted to working towards their Cox Campus training. And then we are doing one, one of our two hours each at our monthly PD. So I meet with 4K every month. And so there's like, in the program, like I'm able to define which courses we're going to start with. And so we're starting with like oral language, like ones that are really going to have a big, big impact right away. And so we are kind of plugging away, but we're only about like seven hours in of the 32-hour training.
Mary, go ahead.
Thank you. This was very helpful and I, I always love data, so I appreciate that. And I'm, I'm glad we're on this particular slide because I wanted to ask, is it expected? So one of the things that I notice is across the majority of the, the rows and columns, the, the difference is fairly consistent within the, the groupings. The one thing that stands out is within the special ed learners population, the, the sound production has a substantial difference. Is that expected or would you mind speaking to that?
Sure. I would say yes, in that we, especially our students who are more concrete thinkers will often come to us knowing all 26 letters right before we even start 4K. And so then we're leaning into that sound production, but that also happens to be the group of students who need the most support socially and emotionally. And so getting students to a place where they're regulated and ready to learn is like our first step and then it's usually a very short window of instruction before we're then regulating again. And so I think that is partly why our numbers are really discrepant right there. But again, I think also it comes back to that communication piece and thinking about how are we working to think about different ways for students to communicate what they know, other than saying like, what sound does this letter make?
Questions? Yep, Caleb.
I think we have a sense of, from some of the strategies you talked about in terms of some of the like reading, science of reading and those kinds of things. But I wanted to ask, with the changes that came with Act 20 and the, you know, the curricular changes and those kinds of things, can you briefly talk or speak to how the instruction at the 4K level kind of aligns with the instruction that's happening at, for reading with Act 20 and how well they match up so that we just have a sense of that?
I think getting them to match more closely is our goal with finding a, a universal literacy curriculum. For Act 20, so 4K wasn't required to have that science of reading training or that curriculum piece. And we know that's best practice, so that's why we're headed that way. I think that, so with Act 20, we do initial sounds in the fall, which again, kind of targets at that sound production piece. It's formulated a little differently in that we're also asking kids to like say like, what sound do you hear versus can you produce it, which are two very different skills, but both work hand in hand together. And then in the spring, we will do let, initial sounds again, but we'll also do letter, word, sound fluency. So thinking about how fluent they are with that automaticity piece of their letter sounds. And last year that was tricky because a skill that we haven't really focused on with that automaticity piece, but one that we're leaning into this year so that we can make sure they're set up for kindergarten. Does that answer your question? Okay.
All right. Thank you very much Candace and Lindsay. Great job. All right. We will move to superintendent's report, district highlights, Dr. Bergstrom.
I'm waiting for the clicker. Thank you. Okay. We have a lot of fun stuff here. And the first thing that I want to share as part of the district highlights is just an update on where, where we are with two of our outstanding board initiatives that we have started this year. So as you know, our cell phone policy was implemented on the very first day of school and initial reports and conversations with principals and with my superintendent's student advisory council is that things are going very well so far. As a matter of fact, when I toured the school with DPI and was in and out of classrooms for an hour and a half, there was not a phone in sight. So that was exciting and it certainly is an improvement. And after we do some surveys toward the end of the month, we'll come back with that information and we're excited about the progress. And as far as our Monday late start that will begin in January, on January 6th to be specific, we opened up our childcare signup last week. It's open until this Thursday, Thursday, the 14th. And so far we've had a nice steady stream of parents signing up in a way that at this point seems very manageable for the program that we have anticipated. And we continue with our weekly planning sessions to make sure that we are ready to provide a really intensive experience for the staff and the PLCs and then also a high-quality student supervision program for the parents who really need assistance in the morning. And then look at this, it's a celebration of everybody at this table. So last week was the Wisconsin School Board Week and so we want to extend our sincere gratitude for everybody who's on our school board. Not only do we have a group of talented and committed people, but we have people with just amazing hearts who really are always thinking about what we can do better for our children. Always grateful for their leadership and last week was the time to put them on social media and thank them publicly. And it was also last week a time to celebrate our principals. So again, a lot of gratitude you're, you're going to hear tonight because we have a really exceptional team of school exceptional team of school principals. They are the guiding lights at our school, schools plural, and we appreciate them immensely. It was also a time to highlight our instructional coaches. And you'll see here, we have instructional coaches, social emotional learning coaches, our new educator mentor, our math coordinator and our literacy coordinator. I mean, honestly, this group is a group that helps to keep our, support our staff so that our instruction can be at the highest level in the areas that we know really matter, both academic and social emotional. And then, oh, this is always fun and that apple costume has gotten a lot of wear over the years. This is the great apple crunch. So all of our students throughout the OSD were offered fresh, locally sourced apples during lunch and we had a lot of fun crunching together. So special shout out to our school nutrition director, Mandy, for expertly playing the part and continuously finding ways to teach our kids to love healthy foods. And then, this is such a great thing by our soccer team. Our OHS soccer team has been busy helping in our community lately. They recently hosted three special youth night training sessions for youth soccer club members. You can see the enthusiasm of our youth soccer club members in the picture. And then our high school students showed great leadership and connected well with those younger kids, a ton of laughs and smiles. And then our JV2 team recently visited Beehive Homes of Oregon for a special bingo night. So our student athletes enjoyed their time meeting and interacting with the residents at the Beehive. Third grade at Prairie View, they recently took a special walk to the Oregon Public Library. That is a nice little trek. I love that they made a walk like that. We're so incredibly lucky to have a resource like our public library right here, just a short walk away. And the students also learned that not everyone in the world has such easy access to books. In some places, books travel by elephant or camel or boat or even bookmobile to reach eager students. So we're grateful for our walkable library and we are inspired by the creative ways people everywhere work to share the gift of reading. At Forest Edge, our students had a very special day. Kindergarten through second grade students had a wonderful opportunity to meet bilingual author Samira Alvarez Gretzinger. She shared her beautiful book, Así Respiro, which takes children on a journey to various places around the world while teaching them valuable breathing techniques. We even got to practice some of those fun techniques together. You can see from the picture that somebody really loved it. And then sixth grade at Forest Edge, they had a special team building activity day focused on collaboration and problem solving and having fun. Both students and staff had a really fun day working together to develop these skills as they start the school year. And we want to extend a sincere thank you to the Forest Edge Parent Teacher Organization for sponsoring this wonderful event. And then our middle school students, they had their catapult challenge that was set up in the OMS library. Using very limited materials, they designed and built catapults to launch a marshmallow as far as possible. It was great to see the engineering skills and the creativity in action. And then, this was such a fun experience. Our, the OSD was honored to be selected as the host site for the recent Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction Leadership Gathering. And following the meeting, or really it was in the midday break, our Oregon high school students led small group tours for the participants. They did such a fantastic job showcasing our school facilities, visiting classrooms, engaging in conversations, answering questions, walking backwards. They gave tours, talking to our guests, navigating the hallways backward. I was so impressed. They were great ambassadors and they effectively demonstrated what life is like in our schools to state education leaders. So thanks to everybody who participated and to the Wisconsin DPI for choosing us. Students in Mr. Stace's wood manufacturing class are diligently working on the first project of the year, a male and key organizer. And honestly, when they bring it home, this will probably be something in their family's home for the next 40 years. These really make it. Parents and grandparents love this stuff. This project not only provides them with a useful organizational tool, but also teaches them essential skills like project planning, measurement, operations of power tools. We're all excited to see the progress. And then, congratulations to the Oregon Equestrian Club on their achievement. They're on their way to the state championship event later this month, sponsored by the Wisconsin Interscholastic Horsemanship Association. We wish them the best of luck. And no, we don't supply horses or saddles or anything like that. The kids were talking about it to our DPI leaders and I had to assure them that we didn't actually have a stable full of horses. So huge congratulations to the OHS girls golf team on an amazing season and on winning regionals. So we're really proud of their hard work, their dedication, their teamwork. It's Isabella Bryant, Maya Haig, Ayla Reckl, Recklaz? I'm going to have to apologize for making a mistake on her name. Madeline Sharkus and Ava Wink. We love watching you play. And then congratulations to our OHS tennis team players who are advancing to state, which is Katie Thorne in the singles and Gianna Golish and Ashley Cook in doubles. Again, we love watching you play and that's coming up. That's just at the end of the week here. And then check out our new podcast with our German exchange students. They were amazing to talk to, as were our students, talking about the impact of this exchange. And I am so incredibly impressed with the English skills that our German students come to us with.
All right. Thank you much. Check out, so we'll do a checkout before our work session. Any, anyone have anything for checkout this evening? Heather, go ahead.
I was fortunate enough to chaperone fourth grade field trip to a farm, which was fantastic in itself, but I wanted to just acknowledge there were FFA high school members there that were sharing their passion and their, you know, their expertise on their, whether it was cow or chicken or pig or, you know, for different farm animals. And I was just blown away with not only their knowledge, but their ability to present and speak to a bunch of, you know, well-behaved, but still, you know, squarely fourth graders and just their patience and their level of engagement. And it was just really lovely to see students teaching students.
Mary?
Yeah, I, along with Anna and Dr. Bergstrom, had the great opportunity to go to the Greater Dane County School District Governance Consortium. I had to write that one down because it's so long. And it was a really enjoyable evening. I think though, my biggest takeaway was one of the, one of the breakout sessions, we talked about how we, different districts look to get community engagement. And the Middleton Cross Plains District has a monthly breakfast. And they, they establish, you know, for a year, they establish a group of individuals who come and they work to get it across various areas of the community, like someone from the library, somebody from the chamber, somebody from, you know, a business or two and, you know, PTO, you know, just a variety of different voices. And then they, they come together once a month, have breakfast and talk through, you know, any challenges that the district is facing, whether that's finances or homelessness or, you know, any number of things. And that helps to bring the community along. It also helps to, for the district to hear their voices as well. So I was really impressed by that, that concept. Thank you.
Anyone else for checkout? All right, we'll take a five-minute recess and then we'll meet in the conference room next door. Thank you.